Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Nathan Hedge is the pastor of May Avenue Wesleyan Church, and he's here with his family today. And I'll ask Councilman John Pettis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when he's completed the invocation. Would everybody please stand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you with thankful hearts for the privilege of serving the citizens of this great city. The task with which you have charged these men and women is significant as they discuss issues and policies which will have long-lasting effects on the economy and well-being of the people in our city limits. We ask that you would give us open ears and understanding hearts to determinedly listen to opposing viewpoints from our own. Help us to stand on principles of absolute truth which are established in your word. Help us to avoid the temptation to establish laws which would be cumbersome to the municipality. Help us to create a better city in which to live, do business, visit, enjoy, and raise our children. Guide every discussion of each policymaker. Let us never take for granted the trust placed in us by those we represent. May we be mindful of the foreigner among us, and may each individual in this city do their part to care for the poor and the needy among us, so no policy is necessary to do so. Keep us pure in your sight, honest with all our dealings, genuine with the affection toward our citizens, wise to face the challenges of the day, principled in the stance we take on the issues, and effective with each decision we make this day. In the all-powerful name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is that time of year when we draw attention to litter and our willingness to get involved and make Oklahoma City a cleaner and more beautiful city. And will all the dinosaurs come forward? We have Terri's here, and of course Lisa Sinar and Mother Earth. They're all coming in from Oklahoma City Beautiful who kind of head up the city's coordinated effort on trying to make it a prettier place. And Litter Blitz starts today, which you're going to hear in this proclamation that I'll ask Clerk to read.
Whereas litter is a critical factor in our city's economic health, and a clean city reduces taxpayers' costs to remove the litter and attract new businesses. Whereas Oklahoma City Beautiful and the city of Oklahoma City are teaming up for Litter Blitz 2014. And whereas Litter Blitz 2014 is an effort to clean up neighborhoods, parks, streets, and businesses to help beautify Oklahoma City. Whereas neighborhood civic church and business groups can register their team to pick up litter on a day they choose. Whereas each team will receive a packet with free trash bags, gloves, and tips for a safe and successful cleanup. Whereas last year, over 13,000 volunteers participated in the community cleanup, and more than 181,000 pounds of trash was removed from our public spaces. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Litter Blitz 2014 in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to help combat litter in their parks, schoolyards, neighborhoods, and throughout all areas of our city.
Let's show our appreciation to Oklahoma City Beautiful and how they help us draw attention to this problem. And Lisa, I'm going to give you the microphone, but just a quick reminder, this is an opportunity for organizations, church groups, Cub Scout groups, neighborhood groups, to get together. And one of the really great things that Oklahoma City Beautiful does about it is they provide a lot of the materials that make it a more safety, safely, more organized effort. And obviously, at the end of the day, that allows you to get more done. And you would think you could just go pick up trash with your bare hands and just put on a pair of shorts, but there's a lot more to it than that. And from being involved myself, I can say those gloves are very handy, having the trash bags very handy. So the coordination that they allow you to help get your group out there is very, very worthwhile. And Lisa, with that, I'm going to let you punctuate this.
We appreciate so much being here today. We're going to kick off Litter Blitz at 4:30 this afternoon in McKinley Park. We are partnering with our Boys and Girls Club and our team board, Oklahoma City Beautiful's team board, and we'll be out there picking up trash. So come join us. Mother Earth and Terry Trash Source will be there. And in over the next month, we'll have over 10,000 volunteers. We already have 100 different groups signed up. A lot of new groups this year are becoming aware, and it's more than just picking up litter. We want to help educate the community to do it on an ongoing basis. And if you have a group that wants to pick up trash in December, we can help you do that too. So it's just not about April, but we really appreciate the partnership with Oklahoma City. They help us pick up the trash after it's all gathered throughout the month, and we will be recycling and getting rid of our trash, and we appreciate so much being a part today.
What should people do if they want to get their organization?
Just call Oklahoma City Beautiful, or you can go to our website. It's OKCBeautiful.com. There's a form that you can complete and fill out, and we will have your bags and safety tips and gloves and everything ready for you to come pick up and come join in the fun.
All right. And it just kind of looks like we've already had kind of a windy start to the spring, and so wind means litter, and so we may have to be an extra diligent this year. But please get out and help support your group, your organizations, your neighborhoods, your church group, Cub Scout groups. Let's get out and make Oklahoma City as clean as it can possibly be, and let's show our appreciation to Oklahoma City Beautiful. It is also National Service Recognition Day, and we are so grateful to have Aseem Mishra here. Aseem, where are you? Aseem, come on up. Aseem is here from Washington, DC, and I'm going to allow you to talk just a little bit about National Recognition Day, and then we're going to bring up some of our local representatives.
Sure. Thank you.
Did I pronounce your name correctly?
You did. Hello, everyone. My name is Aseem Mishra. I'm Chief of Staff of Corporation for National Community Service in Washington, DC. It's really our federal agency in the corporation that advances volunteerism and national service. So AmeriCorps, Senior Corps, we have 80,000 AmeriCorps members across the nation, 270 members in Oklahoma City. We have about 320,000 Senior Corps volunteers, about 2,000 of them are in Oklahoma City. They're doing things like tutoring young kids to ensure that they succeed in school. They are helping our returning heroes from Iraq and Afghanistan get connected to services. They are helping with things like Litter Day to make Oklahoma City beautiful. But Mayor, it's thanks to you and leaders like you on the council that it is a success. And it's thanks to you that in the wake of disaster like what happened in Moore, that the volunteers were able, were been able to leverage those volunteers to solve these problems in places like Oklahoma City. So this is our Day of Recognition, our Day of Thank You to you, to your leadership, and to the leadership of the people of this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, first of all, and stay up here while we bring up some people. But first, why don't we have the Clerk go ahead and start reading our Proclamation for National Service Recognition Day. And I'll ask, in the meantime, the people from Sunbeam and Variety Care and Oklahoma Community Services Commission, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, and as well anybody else that's here from the Corporation for National and Community Service. Come on up and enjoy this as the Clerk reads the proclamation.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and is central to how we meet our challenges. Whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nations, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to helping communities recover from natural disasters. Whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based groups so vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas local agencies and programs utilizing national service participants and volunteers to benefit our most vulnerable citizens include Sunbeam Family Services, Inc., Senior Companion Program, RSVP of Central Oklahoma, Inc., Variety Care Foster Grandparent Program, Oklahoma Department of Human Services Area One Foster Grandparent Program, and the Oklahoma Community Service Commission. Whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen the community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains within them in their future endeavors. Whereas the Corporation of National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, hereby proclaims April 1, 2014, as National Service Recognition Day in Oklahoma City, and encourages all residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
And where would we be without them? So let's show our appreciation to all of these people.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, if you please, I do have a comment about AmeriCorps. For those who don't know, I spent several years as an AmeriCorps member. I was assigned to OU Health Science Center. While at OU Health Science Center, I had the opportunity to work in the Office of Community Partnership Health Policy, working with disadvantaged population as it relates to health policy, and also as it relates to wellness in disadvantaged areas. And so I shall never forget the couple of years that I spent as an AmeriCorps member assigned to the Health Science Center. Thank you.
All right, and now we're going to give out our Cityscape Award. Robbie Kinzel is here. Robbie, you want to come on up? Awards? And Robbie heads up so many of our arts efforts and is a liaison between the city and a lot of our arts organizations that have to do with design, and we have some awards to give out, and I'm just going to let you take over.
Thank you, Mayor. The Curtis Schwartz Award, Cityscape Award, it was established in 1983 and then renamed in 1985 after the late Curtis Day Schwartz, who was a community arts advocate. And we're so glad today that we do have the son of Curtis Schwartz and his wife, Stephen Schwartz, and Lauren Schwartz here today to also be here to honor Stephen's father and his memory. And so we have two recipients. We have the, can I recognize a couple of people?
Yes, absolutely. Bring them up.
Can we, Arts Commissioners, would you please come up and help give the awards? I think we had two Arts Commissioners that wanted to help present them. So Commissioner Seward is the chair of the awards committee, and we have Stephen Kovach, who's also on the awards committee. And then we have the chairman of the Arts Commission, Jim Loftus, and Arts Commissioner Peter DeLeese. If you want to go ahead and give the awards, please.
Yes, on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City, we're very proud to present the Cityscape Award this year to two recipients, the first being the Plaza District Association. Kristen? The Plaza District has been instrumental in really improving the whole cultural scene in Oklahoma City and the art scene as well, and we're honored to give you this award.
The second award that we're going to make is another Cityscape Award in memory of Curtis Schwartz. And I actually knew Curtis Schwartz, I mean, this goes back a while, so I think Eric knew him too. Presented to Leadership Oklahoma City for the donation of Compass Rose to the city of Oklahoma City, selected by the Oklahoma City Arts Commission to honor outstanding design, construction, renovation, or restoration, landscaping, or other extraordinary artistic treatments of new or existing buildings. So Beth, I think this goes to you and your group. Stuart, Michael, Beth, thank you all very much. And I think the, all will agree that if you go down to the boathouse area, you will see the Compass Rose artwork and realize just how, what a great addition it is to Oklahoma City's landscape. I'll also point out that this silver is just a bowl, or is there a more fancy word for that? It's a bowl, thank you. There are, on it are inscribed the winners of every year's recipient since 1983, and we're just about out of room. So we're either going to have to get a new bowl or write smaller going forward in the future. I think we have great recipients this year, and Kristen, the Plaza District has come so far so fast. So thank you and all of your stakeholders in the Plaza District for what they've done. And of course, Leadership Oklahoma City makes a difference yesterday and today and tomorrow. We're very appreciative of all the work that your organization puts together and the leaders that you're helping us to identify and nourish. We're on item three of the council agenda, and item three A is a presentation from Deborah Center, who's the president of Allied Arts. Deborah, you want to come up and lead us through this aspect of the morning?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Allied Arts is here to share with you the story of our new initiative that we have just recently launched. First of all, I'm excited to hear so much artsy great news this morning. This hopefully will just add to the great news for the arts. And what we're sharing is a platform that Allied Arts has introduced to Oklahoma, and it's a crowdsourcing platform called PowerToGive.org. And when we were going into this, we were just hopeful to generate some new micro donors using the internet because there's a 13% growth in internet giving, so we were hoping to capitalize on that. Well, we were hoping to accomplish several things. We wanted to attract smaller donors, new donors. We wanted to create an entire revenue stream for the arts profit sector, and we wanted to help arts groups to tell their stories better, and we also wanted to be able to help more underserved groups who maybe not have access to the arts. So we developed Power To Give, and I'm very happy to say that since the end of February, we have raised $78,500 online giving.
Oh, great.
So we have a great partner in this effort. Our partner is Continental Resources, and they are matching dollar for dollar everything that is pledged on the site. So how it happens is Allied Arts hosts the site, and then we invite nonprofit arts groups to post projects on the site that they have in need of funding. And then they tell everyone that they know about their project being posted, and we try to attract all the general public, we try to attract everyone to go visit the site, and then they shop for the project that they might connect with. And we've had a few success stories in that regard. We had a donor that had not given to us from Norman since 1989, got on the site yesterday and donated $500. We had somebody here who had taken a part in a city Oklahoma contemporary ceramics course, and she got on the site and saw that she could do that, so she paid for more people and told even more people all about it. So the site is going very well. We've now completely funded six projects, there's 24 on there, and the great news, as I said, is that we're partnering with Continental Resources. We actually have new donors in nine other states that are donating to our projects here in central Oklahoma, so we're very excited about it. And it has a gift card ability, so employees can use it as an incentive for their employees, you can use it to give as a gift. And just because we want to make sure that all the council has a chance to visit the site, we are going to give each of you a gift card so that you can go to the site and see exactly what we're talking about, and then you can donate to the project that you are most connected with. So just good news, Mayor, that we wanted to share with you today on PowerToGive.org.
Everybody that's here.
Please go visit the site. Thank you so much. We hope to raise 150,000 by the end of June.
Wonderful. Thank you, Deborah. Still on item three of the council agenda, amongst the appointments is Councilwoman Sayir to become the new council representative on the MAPS Advisory Board. And I want to thank Councilman White for his year of service in that regard. A lot of steps forward were taken on all of the MAPS projects through the year, and I hope you enjoy it as much as Councilman White seemed to this past year. I'll look for a motion on the appointments. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 24th, and item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 18th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. Under item eight D1 on page eight, page eight, eight D1. Item A, 6724 Bear Canyon Drive, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item B, 1117 Northwest 7th Street, we asked that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Over recessed council meeting, convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where there are three items. Comments or questions here? Cast your votes on the MFA. Passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC MFA, convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where there are two items. Comments on the PPA.
Could I just ask a question about the golf item? Is this unusual to, I mean, is this a timing thing on cash flow, or has weather been bad, or I didn't know if there was?
Revenues have been down at the golf courses over the last year or so, and so we're monitoring that very closely.
I have another question. How much money is in this fund that we're taking $30,000 out of?
I'll need some help on that. It's, I'm not going to guess on that. We'll get some people who can answer that in here in just a second.
Because if all the golf courses are troubled with revenue, we may want to use that, what's remaining in the fund, to support them through the courses.
I, you know, I, Wendell, can you tell me how much money is in the? Wendell, can you tell me how much money is in the golf course operating reserve?
Yes, sir. In the neighborhood of $300,000.
Thank you, Wendell.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ready to vote the PPA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC PPA, convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I wanted to mention Six T, if I could.
T as in Tom?
T as in Tom.
We do have a presentation on six R.
Oh, we do.
I'm sorry. Give me dinner.
Okay. P, Q, and R.
P, Q, and R. Okay.
You ready?
Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and have the presentation. The presentation is on, you say, R?
Good morning. I'm Kathy O'Connor. I'm the president of the Alliance for Economic Development, and this morning we have an amendment to the city's professional services agreement with public financial management so that they can be retained to conduct a hotel feasibility study, convention center hotel feasibility study. We've presented some of this information to you in the past. In December, we presented the market study and the economic impact report to you. So this is the next step in the process of evaluating the convention center hotel and its financial feasibility as it relates to its development and relationship with the new convention center. This morning, I have with me Tom Morse, who is the director of the public-private partnership practice at public financial management, and he's going to go through a couple of slides to talk about this next phase of the study.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning, Mayor.
Councilman?
As Kathy indicated, I was here last year, and we, I think the council at that point in time made a decision to go ahead with the hotel feasibility study and wait to look at whether or not there should be any public subsidy or not for the hotel. That's kind of the task that we have at hand, which is taking the hotel feasibility study, taking a look at the convention center project as a whole, integrating the hotel into that, and determining whether or not a subsidy, if any, frankly, should be committed to help support the project. Based on what I've heard, generally, the objective is to either eliminate the need for any subsidy, and so that'll be one of the primary objectives going into the work. We'll look at the various alternative ways that communities do subsidize convention centers. It's something that's happening around the country. And look at those from a risk standpoint of what potential risks those would present to the city if, in fact, you ever chose to do that. We expect to work for about three months. We'll be building a pro forma model, which projects out how this hotel would function and how it would perform. We'll stress test that to kind of get our handle around risk associated with it. Those kind of report and options will come back to you. You're the decision makers in this. We'll be doing the work and hopefully providing you the analytics to help in your decision
Can we ask questions at this time?
I'm sorry, is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah, I mean, I can go through the slides in general.
Why don't you go through a little?
I mean, the other key thing here is we'll want to engage, and our experience is, is that the more people that we can engage and the more stakeholders that we can engage in the project, the more robust the analysis is. It's not simply financial considerations, it's other policy objectives that you as city council and other stakeholders set that help determine whether or not these projects can be feasible and whether or not you should provide support or not. Those are very important considerations. We have a, the next slide, Brett, we have a robust kind of process that we've engaged in in lots of projects, including other hotel-related projects. It's proven very successful. Oftentimes, in other projects of this nature, there are stakeholders that have different points of view. It's important to identify those early. It's not productive to do financial analysis in a vacuum, and so we integrate that into the process, and we'll be reaching out to you, and we'll encourage each of you to speak your minds. I know some of you like to do that. I like to do it, so we'll appreciate that as part of the process. It'll make the outcomes that much better. In terms of the timeline, the next slide, I outlined kind of what we'll be doing at the front end. We'll want to engage folks. We'll begin then building a financial model. We have a lot of best practices and examples from other communities of how support has been given to hotel projects. We understand how those projects have performed, some well, not so well. We'll take those best practices and incorporate it here. And in terms of, just on the final slide, I did just a high level of our experience in doing this. We're engaged in quite a few projects similar to this. We're doing one in Portland right now, very similar. Lots of stakeholder issues are involved in Portland. There's a little bit of delay in the project because of that. It's one of the reasons we try and build in input and stakeholder input early in the process, because there's no sense doing a lot of work until we get people kind of around a concept and integrate.
I know some communities have built a convention center and not built a hotel. Will those be part of the study as well?
Absolutely. We'll just, you know, how the hotel integrates to the convention center, what the feasibility study didn't do that we're going to have to do now is take those other pieces like parking, how it integrates, who pays for what, infrastructure, all the different kinds of investments that will be associated with the convention center, and see which get allocated where. That's not a simple task, and it's an important task to determine clarity around your investments and getting a return on those.
Okay. David, comment or question?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a, just one question. Can you, at this time, provide some examples of the types of incentives that other municipalities have provided? Are they all, for example, upfront cash-type incentives, or could they include such things as, you know, reduction in the hotel tax, things like that? Could you just give a brief discussion of the types of incentives that have been used?
Absolutely. And the incentives, if you look at projects around the country, range from zero to 100%. So just so you know the world that we're dealing with. They take the form of tax rebates, as you indicated, tax increment financing in some cases, donations of ground, of land to build the facilities, backing of bonds. In some cases, cities stand behind the credit for the bonds, expecting the revenues of the hotel to pay for it. And in the event they don't pay, cities are standing behind those bonds. So it takes many different forms. We'll be looking at those kind of alternatives for you to see, you know, we look at those as kind of levers. What levers can you pull if, in fact, we need to do a study? The initial feasibility report suggests that the hotel will be profitable, but as I indicated, we have to get a little bit further into the weeds to see, you know, it doesn't have a full cost allocation to that project, so we have to look at the full cost allocation and see if that's truly the case.
Thank you.
Just a comment, Mayor. I really appreciate this opportunity to become better educated. We've all talked kind of around the fringes about this, but personally, I don't feel as if I know enough to be able to make that kind of an important decision on behalf of the city and our citizens. So I'm looking forward to digging way deeper into the weeds and becoming a little bit more educated. So thank you.
Appreciate your input.
So much.
Yeah.
I'm a simple guy, and so what I would like to see from the study is, you know, because I see that we're building a convention center, we're basically creating a demand for people to stay in hotels. And so if we, if the conclusion that you come to that there is going to need to be subsidies, I would really like the question of why a hotel developer doesn't want to come in and do it on their own. You know, if we're, if we're creating this demand through building a convention center, just my simple economic brain, I'm not a trained economist, but, so that's really the question I would like to ask, is why would they not? Why do they not want to do it on their own? Why do they not want to put up the risk to do it on their own? Maybe with us just giving them the land right next to the convention center to do it, you know, but that's pretty much the only public subsidy. Just my thoughts.
Okay. Beth?
I watched, the last time you were here was on June 11th of 2013, and I watched that city council meeting last night, and you indicated that you were ready to go, you advocated really that you didn't need the feasibility study first. You even seemed to indicate that you'd like to go first, that you were ready to go, that you could get it done in a couple of months. Now 10 months has passed, almost a year. What's transpired in the last year? What information have you learned? What was the need for the delay of 10 months? Let me let that be my first question.
I believe at the time, we always needed the hotel feasibility study. I think we were going to do them concurrently at the time.
Right, right.
So that was the plan last year, and I think it was your decision really to defer that and look at the feasibility study first, so.
And then once we have...
So that's it. So that was the only issue that I'm aware of.
We had the feasibility study at the end of the summer, and we've gone another eight months. Was there a reason?
I think it's dated about January. The version I saw is dated December, January.
The market study was presented December, so...
Okay. So we just waited four months for... Okay.
To come back today, yes.
Okay. So you indicated that you're going to use data from the market study. What data specifically would be important to you from the Stone market study?
Well, the critical data will be occupancy rates and other things. So as we stress test and look at it from a risk perspective of the city, we're going to be toggling those numbers down, right?
Hotel occupancy.
Yeah, and show you that in the event that projections are not met according to the study, here's what that impact would be. So before you lay out public subsidy, if you would ever do that, you would have a sense of what risk is associated with that.
Would you look at performance of the convention center and projected performance of the convention center?
Yeah, those would be other factors that would be in there, which is projected number of meetings and others. I mean, the hotel feasibility report suggests that group-related room nights in that is about 80% or 70% of the business, so it's largely driven by that. So we'll have to toggle that down to show you the risk.
What data will you use to project the performance of the convention center?
We're not in the business of projecting performance. We will use a model to help you understand that if, in fact, there's a public subsidy, what events could impact that. And so, for example, to use Alderman Greenwell's comment about what kind of forms does it take? If you're simply backing up bonds, if, in fact, we would look at to say, would there ever be a situation where you'd have to replenish a debt reserve fund or some other event? So those are the kinds of issues we'll be looking at.
I'm just, I'm still confused. Where will you draw the data that projects the performance of the convention center? Will it just be from the Stone study?
That projects the performance of the hotel. I defer to Kathy on the projections on the convention center performance, so.
I think what Tom is trying to say is that we don't, we will use the projections of the performance of the hotel.
But that would depend on the performance of out-of-town attendees at a convention center, would it not?
And that's a part of the hotel market study.
Right.
That, you know, the percentage of occupancy attributed to different types of visitors is all in that hotel market study. So we don't need a convention center market study or feasibility study to do this next piece.
That's the question. I really don't see it in the Stone study. It talks about attendance at the convention center, which includes things like attendance of barons' games, and it's all kind of lumped into, you know, there's 500,000 attendees at the convention center. It's not broken down by out-of-town visitors to the convention center. So one thing in particular, I'm wondering if it would be helpful, is to have S&amp;G break that down for us, because Stone just kind of threw it all into one category, attendance at the convention center. And he's including hour meetings at the convention center, the barons' games, the sports, local, it's all thrown into one. Those are the only numbers that are in that study. So would it be helpful, and I understand S&amp;G does this in many cities, is it breaks that data down by events? So out-of-town conventions, local sporting events, city council meetings. Would that data be helpful for you to know how many out-of-state visitors, convention visitors, there are and are projected to be?
The more data we can get, the better, and that's part of what we'll do right off the bat, is collect every piece we can get. And I appreciate your comments on that, because that's helpful.
Jim, would it be possible to have S&amp;G provide that breakdown for us?
Don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, the more data we can get, the better. So that'll just make the analysis more robust.
Great, thanks. It seemed like the study was 100,000 last year, is it?
What we've done is we've broken it so that we do this feasibility study piece and then come back to you with a report, and then you all would decide whether or not to go to the next phase of the process. Brett, could you pull up the presentation just again real quick, so I can show them what I'm talking about? The next phase of the process would be to develop the RFP and issue an RFP to developers. So what we're proposing today is to break that into two pieces. So the first piece is going to be, go back one more slide, I think it is. Okay, steps four and five are not included in this scope of work.
Whereas they were the last year.
They were the last time, yeah.
Okay.
So that's the difference.
I have one other question. Are you guys going to be tied to the 735-room number that Stone recommended, or are you, or does that even factor into what you're going to be doing? Because obviously, a 300-room hotel is going to be cheaper than a 735-one to run.
Yeah, I will tend to defer to their analysis. They're experts in that, but, I mean, we can certainly, you know, fiddle around with that. The cost per room is about $270,000 per room. I mean, we can certainly change investment dollars. But I don't, I think we're, you're going to get out of my area of expertise quickly if you do.
Well, I guess, you know, because you said one of the primary objectives is to eliminate subsidies earlier, and so that would be an option to eliminate subsidies if it makes it cheaper to do. And so I didn't know if that was going to be possibly an option that you present to us or not.
We can certainly throw that into the mix as something to look at. I mean, you're speaking from, you know, 95% of our clients are public entities. I come at it from the same point of view as you do, which is, let's keep the money in your pocket if you don't have to, right? Give it away. So that's where we start from.
Well, it's funny, my brain starts from a private entity, though, so it...
Right. Well, and they come from a different point of view. So I happen to work for you type of folks and have been on a city council, so I kind of get it from where you're thinking.
All right. Thanks, Brett. Any comments or questions on this item? All right. Well, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
How long do you think before we get the report?
Well, I think we were looking at midsummer to come back with some recommendations, and I really, please encourage your individual or group feedback. Maybe we'll do a workshop. We'd like you to kick the tires and kick me in the process, and we'll see how we end up.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Meg, you wanted to comment on item T?
I did, and folks may have had an opportunity to read the front page of the paper today. It talked about... It talked about a pretty historic day for our independent school district. I think last night there was a vote to approve a new superintendent that we'll learn about soon, but they also-
A nameless superintendent?
Nameless superintendent at the moment, but a vote was also taken. And so we have before us today a joint resolution with the I-89 district to approve the acquisition of 615 North Classen as the new administration building. And I hadn't realized before I saw that article that they've been in that building for 80 years, I think. This is the first new building acquisition in an 80-year timeframe. And I know they've worked very hard to find the correct space and the right configuration. This is a building at 6th and Classen, extremely centrally located, great parking, quite a bit smaller than the facility they're currently in, in much better repair. And so I think it's a very exciting opportunity. And I'm happy that today is finally here for the district.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that. I couldn't agree more. I think the decision by the Board of Education to move to 6th and Classen is a great decision. I think it raises the visibility of the board's administration building. It's the idea of going to a smaller footprint and spreading some of those, some of that personnel that's located there at, in their current facility, out to the, to other schools to get those people in administration more in contact with, out where the rubber meets the road, where kids are learning. I think it's just a great move. I just applaud that decision. And I think it's a very, very positive thing for the city.
Ed, you wanted to make a comment on P, Q, and R?
Right, P and Q. R, we've covered P and Q. Just, you know, it's clearly the consensus of the council that this is how we want to spend the $75 million or so of Golt Economic Development funds. And so I'll reluctantly vote with the rest of the council. But I still have the three same concerns that I've had in the past and continue to have. Number one, I don't understand the formula for how we're paying out incentives. How we give $7 million to Continental, $800,000 to Baker Hughes, $4 million to Chesapeake, $1 million to General Electric. I just don't understand the equation. I don't understand the science of how much money we're giving on each one of these projects. Second, I think we continue to give money for things that would happen anyway. I don't think that the specific formula was put in the language that the voters voted on, but I understand that there was language that it would be 125% of the average of the Oklahoma County employment, which makes it more than some $50,000 average salary. So we've set up a system that it can only go to large multinational corporations. General Electric is a company that in the last quarter made $5.4 billion profit. So basically, every hour, they're making $2.5 million in profit. This is a little over 20 minutes of their 24-hour-a-day making some $2.5 million an hour. I just don't believe that that's going to be a significant factor in whether or not they do this. We met with the GE representative. He gave us 10 to 15 great reasons why they'd be in Oklahoma City. Their customers are here, more customers an hour and 15 minutes down the turnpike in Tulsa. Lots and lots of great reasons, not that we're giving a $1 million incentive. So I think that the 20% increase in profit they saw last quarter is almost all driven by oil and gas increases in their oil and gas revenues. And I think this would happen regardless of whether we vote today, how we vote today.
Councilman, did you read any newspaper accounts of what was going on prior to the decision being made to relocate in Oklahoma City? The competition we were involved in with GE?
Yes.
So that may have been the balance, the point to tip the balance in our favor.
I would be extremely disappointed in GE management if that was, you know, what they make in a little over 20 minutes with the deciding vote.
You had an opportunity to question GE management if they were here. Did you raise those questions with them?
We met with them, you and I met with them. He talked for roughly an hour. He never mentioned incentives as the tipping.
You had an opportunity to question GE management on the third floor, and you're saying that they would have come regardless of whether we gave them incentive or not?
Right. I mean, they've made the announcement three months ago. They've talked for three months. We haven't had the vote yet. Do you believe, I don't believe, I can only speak for myself, I don't believe if we vote no today, they're not going to come. And therefore, the answer is, I don't believe, I think it would happen anyway.
But you don't know. You don't believe it.
I don't know. I don't know. Third and finally, I think this is a state responsibility. If we're going to give incentives, the state should be giving the incentives, because this is on the, we don't know that everybody that's getting these jobs is not, it's right on the turnpike, not going up I-235 and living in Edmund. No matter where they live, all the income tax goes to the state. Therefore, I believe it should be a state responsibility to give these incentives. Oklahoma City may very well be subsidizing all the other municipalities who aren't participating in the incentives. We're giving all the local incentives. None at Edmund, Moore, Norman, they're not giving anything. And we have no idea where these employees live. Thanks.
Well, I think your comments are interesting, and you need to spend some time with Brett going over the formula he uses to compute what these rewards are going to be.
I've asked for it for three years. I don't, I mean, I-
Have you ever attended any of our meetings?
I've watched your meetings online, yeah.
No, you haven't?
No, I haven't attended them. I've watched them on TV. Thanks.
Well, you got to attend them, because that way you can ask questions at the point where we're considering these things, to make sure that we're doing what you think is right.
I'll take your one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the consent docket.
Hold on, Ms. May, if you will. P and Q, by the way, Ward 7.
And with that, we'll vote on the consent docket, and it passes unanimously. Out of the concurrence docket, just two items today. All right, comments or questions on either of these items? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8 begins an item, a series of items that require a separate vote. We'll begin with the street closure in Ward 2 on item 8A. This is closing a portion of Northwest 109th Street. Ed, you okay with this?
No protests and unanimous approval at the planning commission. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Let me make sure I'm on the right. Can I catch up with you here?
Okay.
My name is Matilde Lanham.
Okay, well, come on, won't you pull that microphone down?
My name is Matilde Lanham.
Hold on just a second. Ed, you want to go ahead and hear from her?
Absolutely.
Okay. If you'll give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay. It's Matilde Lanham. I live on 11008 North Miller Avenue. We use that dead end to access the mall, or the shopping center quite frequent.
Okay.
And then another thing is, it's right on the front door, when the Baker Building there. Are we going to be having all the traffic, the construction right there in our front door? I have a neighbor with me, she just stepped out.
Can you tell me your address again?
11008 North Miller Avenue.
Okay.
It's on the corner of 110th and Miller.
110th and Miller, and so you come down Miller, and then you go through that street to the-
It's just one street. It's just one street down. We use it, have you ever seen the shopping center?
Yes.
How many empty spaces they got there? I'm not sure why they have to take all right away to walk through to that, to build something.
Matt, did you, you didn't come to the planning commission, I guess?
No. I did get the letter, but I read it too late, and it was too late to come to a meeting.
You read the letter after the planning commission? Are there others in the neighborhood who are also concerned?
I had one person with me. She just stepped out to use her phone. If you can wait a minute. She lives on 109th Street.
Are the developers or the, those who-
The applicants.
Applicants. Do you think we could hear from the applicant why he, they want to close the street?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you have a seat for just a moment, and we'll bring you back up in a moment. Thank you.
Members, members of Council Brian Kinneth Hewitt Zoller's reference, any of the applicant. Couple things. That street, that dead-end street stub has been open as a pedestrian-only access to the back of the mall for a long time, probably 30, 40 years. I used to cut through when I went to Hoover. I could cut through to go home when I walked home. So that will still be the case. We are not opening that street for any traffic at all, so they're concerned about construction traffic. It won't be opened. It will still, it'll still be fenced, but there will be an open area where people could ride their bikes through or walk through. So nothing's going to change for the neighborhood in that regard. We have a 40,000, we're going to tear down the, kind of where the two L's come together, that will be torn down. There's a new user here in the city that's going to build a 40,000 square foot facility right there at the corner where those two wings come together. And in the back, we have about 20 feet between the back of the building and that fence. So we just need that for additional parking, for extra access behind the building. But the neighbors will still be able to walk through to get to the mall like they always have, and there will not be any vehicular transfer, connection at all.
Brian, what will the neighbors be looking at? How far will that shopping center extend back?
We are going to, we're just going to actually build a, it'll be at a 45-degree angle right there. So it's still going to be the back of the building. It's the back of the building now. It'll still just be the back of the building. So there's still, again, it'll still be fenced. It's just going to provide for some additional parking and clear up, like I said, right now, there's about a 20-foot space where the trucks going back have to go through, and then they could go on out to May. So nothing's going to change for the neighborhood as far as access, either cars or pedestrian. So they'll still be able to cut through, walking, walking through.
And they currently can't drive through?
They currently can't drive, never have been able to. For 40 years, that has not been open as a public street. It's just, it's a dead-end stub. Why it was ever put there, I don't know. The original plat had large lots to the west, so I don't know why it was ever stubbed that way. There was never a house fronting on it, so I don't know why it was that way. But again, it's always been open to, for pedestrian traffic, and it will still be.
And is that current space behind it parking right now?
Yes. Yes, there used to be a cellular phone company that would install the car, the phone in your car, and you could park back there and wait. But it's really just for truck traffic, for deliveries back in the back. Like I said, it's pinched down to about a 20-foot wide space back there. Right now, we're wanting to open that up and also to be able to add on more space.
So what is actually changing here? Because it's saying we're closing a portion of it. That implies that it's open, so.
Well, we're just going to, it's right now a public street. It's a 71-foot-long public street that we're just going to close down. It's, I don't know if people park on it now, park their boats, can play basketball. It's just a way to cut through to the deal. So they'll still be able to cut through, but it's not, it's not someone's front door at all.
So it's going to be closed parallel with Miller Avenue?
Yes.
Is that right? Right there at that corner?
Yes, the house, yes.
Instead of closed by the parking lot?
Yes. Still have a fence, just like it does now.
Did you have any meetings with the neighbors, or?
We've talked to several of them. We obviously talked to the guy to the north, because he, half of it's his once it gets closed. So we've talked to him, and he was part of the applicant, you know, application, application process when we submitted this. So it affects him more than anybody, just immediately north of that. So he was okay with it.
What's he going to do with it?
We've offered to buy it from him. Don't know what he wants to do, if he wants to extend his yard or whatever, but we've offered to buy it from him. That gives us 25 feet more to be able to drive through there a little easier, so. But again, it'll be completely fenced off, just like it is now.
How does he drive out?
He has driveways in the front of his house. Well, no, I'm sorry, he's right there where that looks like where the hand cursor is. That's his driveway right there, it looks like.
And so that part will still be there?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I thought you were, Council McGriner was asking if it's parallel with Miller.
Well, if, it is parallel. Well, okay, if you go on the south side of the street, see the house to the southeast of where we're trying to close?
Yes.
There, west lot line, will just extend on through that street, to this property line there.
Okay. Good morning. If you would just pull that down and give us your-
We just have concerns about traffic.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
You would pull that down, microphone, and then give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Yarborough. Address is 2720 Northwest 109th, which is just three houses down from the proposed wall.
Okay. She's already identified herself.
I'm sorry.
I already mentioned it. And we're concerned about the traffic when you build, right in our front door. I mean, there's going to be traffic in, right now, it's a dead end.
Yeah, it's still going to be a dead end, according to what we just heard.
There won't be cars driving through there?
How about the construction people?
The construction, will they come from the west?
No, absolutely not. They cannot get through there.
I think, yeah, they can't get through there, so they would come from the west, correct?
Yes.
They would come through the shopping plaza and that, on those parking lots to get there. That's, nobody's going to come through the neighborhood, park on the east side, and walk over or do anything? Okay.
Wait, now's a great time for you to ask questions, because he's here. Do you have any other concerns or questions you'd like asked?
The traffic and interest is what, the only thing we were concerned about.
Okay.
Yeah, and those two issues. There will be no increase in traffic, because traffic will not be able to go through, and the pedestrian access will still remain open.
Okay, well, when you have that center, whatever workout place, are those people going to walk through that access and parking or on our street?
No, the public parking for the exercise facility will be in the parking lot for Quell Plaza, and we will make sure that they're not going to park. I don't see any reason that they would do that. I mean, you have to cut a long way to get through the neighborhood to park there.
Well, now, if you keep that open, that right-of-way open for us to walk through, are people going to walk from our place to that?
And we would encourage that. We would encourage pedestrian traffic from the neighborhood to get to this workout. So that's why it's been open all these years.
She means that they might come, park in their neighborhood, and then walk across to the exercise.
I guess they could do that now if they just wanted to go eat dinner there or something. They could park in there.
No, it wouldn't, because it wouldn't be right there. But you have a building right there. They're going to park wherever it's closest. And if that's closer, they're going to park there and then walk over to the front of the building.
Yeah, well, the front of the building will be on the west side, so they will not be able to exit, come into the back of the building. The back will be for deliveries only. So I don't see any change.
Deliveries. We're going to have deliveries.
Well, you already do now. I mean, that's the back of the shopping center.
No, we don't have anything right now.
Not in our neighborhood.
No, we won't be-
Deliveries are all behind the shopping center.
Exactly. And that'll stay the same.
Okay. Another question we have is, I guess it's more of a concern. Why are we building the new big building when there are so many spaces in the shopping center that are empty?
Because the facility that wants to build there will not work in the existing facility that any of the buildings are there. They want a new 40,000-square workout facility, they have a pool. It'll be a whole lot different.
And the grocery store is not that big, or where the grocery store was?
No.
About Tuesday morning.
And can we not tear down some of the existing structure to move their structure up closer to the shopping center as opposed to back there against the wall?
Well, it's just, this is where the developers chose the foot. It's where the user wants to have the building. It'll be a nice new structure, 40,000 square feet. They will tear down that back.
But who's going to go in that structure? None of the, we're not going to go to a-
Yeah, I think we're really here, we're talking about the access in the street, not really the use of the building or the construction of the building. It doesn't sound like, you know, just the flow, whether it's pedestrian or the, and there's no more traffic coming. It doesn't sound like your life's going to be impacted much, from what I'm hearing. But I understand when you get something, you know, and you miss the planning commission meeting, you want to come down here and get your answers. But, you know, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't, doesn't sound like your concerns are valid. Brian, is there anything else you want to add to kind of relieve their anxiety?
Nothing really changes traffic-wise or pedestrian.
Yeah.
So they've indicated that it's not going to change the traffic. If it does, please let us, let me know. But it sounds like-
Yeah, but what's the feeling if there is nothing you can do about it?
Yeah, the building is not impacted by what we're doing today, as far as what I can understand, right? Yeah, the building is not, not part of this. Thank you all for coming down.
So I'll move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second on item 8A. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 8B is an item we've heard before. Eric introduced this item, and this will be the final hearing today. We held a public hearing on this. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak on item 8B before we vote? All right, how about a motion?
Who's the item?
Cast your votes. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item eight C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight C? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item eight D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight D? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight E is a public hearing regarding a street improvement assessment district, and this is in Ward four. Pete?
The, this had to be deferred last time because of a concern with the notice requirements.
Right.
Is there anyone here to protest this? It's my understanding that everybody, there is a protest. Come speak.
My name is Mike Lindsay. I live at thirteen one-three-five-two-four Stone Creek Drive.
And your protest is?
Whenever I, I purchased the home last year, in the middle of, basically in May, I was not aware of basically this, this going up to, to have this improvement done, basically so my taxes increase. If I would have known that, then I probably would have not have purchased the house, just because it increased the, the amount of value of the home and where it's at and everything, and then add these taxes on top of it.
I, I guess I'm not following the taxes part.
Well, I guess it's my understanding is, the, the way that the improvement on the roads is basically going to be done is going to be divided out per house, and then we're going to be taxed. According to the estimate here, it's about fourteen thousand dollars per home. That would be...
You'll be charged the cost of, of construction?
Yes.
I mean, I guess that's a tax in some, some definition of the word tax, but that's the, not a tax as, I know, it's only for the period of time it takes to repay the cost of construction.
Correct. So, I mean, I don't know what the, obviously, cost of, of that is completely be, because I was told there's going to be interest on top of that, to basically pay that out, and I guess it's out over the next ten years.
Yes.
So, how, how is that assessed? Is that typically through? How's that done?
I believe it's divided over a ten-year span, in equal installments. It, it is included as part of your, on your ad valorem tax assessment, so that would probably lend some credence to the idea that it is a tax, but it is actually the cost of the construction of the, of the road.
Correct. I don't want to say that it's a bad thing. It's a great thing. I think it would be good. It's just in my situation of where I purchased the home, and then this right here was going through prior to me being there. It's kind of like I didn't really get a vote beforehand. So, it's kind of, here it is, and you're, you know, obviously, this is where it's at. So...
Okay. But, anyone on the other side like to speak? Ask the, thank you. I just didn't have one of you. I think all the rest of the people that are, that are in favor of it are, unless you have something to say in addition to what he says.
Hi, I'm Archie Card. I live at, sorry, I picked up the wrong agenda.
I know this, this project has been a while in the making, because I've talked to a number of people over, over the last two or three years, in fact, about how you do it. But, what, so I know it's not a brand-new idea. It's been going on quite a while.
No, no. I'm Archie Card. I live at thirteen-six-sixteen Stone Creek. I'm the president of the HOA. I've kind of done a walk-around survey, and I understand his concerns, but we've put extensive research into different ways to repair the road. We, we can do it ourselves. We can do it this way. This way may not be the most cost-effective, but I think in the end, it's the best way for us to do it, and the consensus with the rest of the neighborhood. Short, I may not have complete commitment from two neighbors, but the rest of us have decided that this is the way we want to do it. And what he's referring to as taxes, it will be added over a ten-year period to our property taxes. We also can either pay it off and avoid the interest on it, but I just wanted to, to address the council and let them know that we are, as a whole, in the neighborhood, in favor of us moving this way.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for me?
I, I don't, I have a couple of comments, but I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Is anybody else on, that's in favor, want to add anything to that? One of the things that I, that I see is, and it's especially true in rural areas, is that oftentimes these additions are built, and they have a homeowner's association that's responsible for maintenance. Almost uniformly, those homeowner associations are not really capable of maintaining the roads. The cost of doing it, the, the problems with collection of the money among the, among the group, it, it becomes very difficult. Generally, the road deteriorates, and then the next thing that happens is the value of the homes deteriorate, and the next thing, people start calling me, wonder why the city can't pave it. And the fact is, they bought their house for less than they would have bought it for otherwise, had it, had the city built the road or the street to begin with. And so, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this way of doing it, because I think over the long pull, everybody will benefit from it. The city will benefit from it, because the streets will be maintained properly. The homeowners will, and ordinarily, you will recover the cost of it several times over in terms of the increased value and the increased enjoyment you'll have of your home. I know that when you're talking about spending this much money, that you weren't planning on spending. That's, that's certainly a problem. I, I totally understand that. But, in looking at the greater good in a, in a broader view of it, I believe, I wish more neighborhoods would do this, frankly. If you sat in my seat and listened to the complaints that people have about why their streets aren't maintained, when they never were built to city standards, or they never were, the city never accepted them in the first place, I think you'd, you'd understand a little bit more why I'm so heavily in favor of this idea generally, and especially when it has a, a strong majority of the neighborhoods want to do it. So, as a result, I'm going to move approval. It, that is not without recognition of the gentleman that spoke, of the cost of it. I do understand that. But, I think the greater good is that it, that, that I'm going to move approval of the...
May I just ask a technical question? How do they divide the assessment? Do you take the number of homeowners on the street and the construction costs?
In, here, I saw the income. He can explain.
He can be done multiple ways. This one is just done as a street division by the property owners. It's, it's an each, just equal allocation.
So, if it was a fifty thousand dollar project, and there were ten homeowners, everybody would pay five thousand dollars?
The next one you're going to hear is not. The next one you're going to hear is based upon a linear footage assessment.
Okay.
Anyway, I, I move approval. I just think, on balance, it's a very positive thing to do.
Our, our ability to allow street assessment districts, is that in state law, or is it just allowed by absence of state law? It's in state law as an opportunity for citizens together to have a vote on a geographic area. Okay, so it's spelled out. All right, thanks. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay.
Question, Pete. This, this street is a private road right now. It's not a city street, right?
Probably maintained, yes.
Probably maintained.
And I guess one more question. I'm sorry. I just want to maybe ask this question so other people would hear it. We can also do something, neighborhoods could also do something like this for sidewalks, not just streets?
Yes, you can do that. There's any number of capital improvements that can be done through an assessment district, lighting, sidewalks.
Water lines. We've done several.
Okay, and so essentially, Dan, it requires fifty-one percent of the affected area to make the application?
Yes.
And then, there's a process?
Yes, ma'am.
Following that. Okay, thank you. I just, some of our neighborhoods, Miller in particular is one I've been working with, and they have sidewalk, you know, sidewalk problem that's probably bigger than the city can manage, and maybe a special improvement district would be a way to handle it.
All right.
So, Pete, we, we take over the maintenance at what point? Once it's built, then we take over the maintenance thereafter?
The street has to be built to city standards, and it will be inspected during the process to make sure it is. Once it's, it's finally accepted, then the city takes over the maintenance, and they'll, and that's in perpetuity. It'll, it'll be maintained like any other city street is anywhere from, never get another bill for it. It's, it's just a practical solution to a thorny problem, in my opinion.
We have a motion in a second on item eight E, and we're voting now. Passed unanimously. Item eight F is a public hearing on another street assessment district. This one's in Ward two, and we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. You want to hear from them first? Linda Blaylock, Ron Blaylock. Y'all want to come up together or separately? It's your call.
Mayor, I have a preemptory motion that I think will eliminate all of this, if I may be heard of.
Okay, well, let's hear from Eric first, and then we'll let you all speak if you still want to.
This process is governed by statute, by state statute. And I want to read, I, I attached a copy of the state statute to my letter brief to each of you, and I want to read the key language in the statute that governs this process. It says, "Provided, however, if the owners of fifty percent or more in area of the tracts or parcels within the district," that's one group of people, the owners of a majority of the land, that's not what I'm about to suggest to you, but it's there, so I read it, "or," and here's the key language, "a majority of the owners of record of property in the assessment area protest in writing the creation of the district." They protest in writing the creation of the district. The district shall not be created. The word "shall" in Oklahoma jurisprudence is mandatory. So, if this event has occurred, if indeed, a majority of the owners of record of property in the assessment area protest in writing the creation of a district, the district shall not be created. That event has occurred. It occurred yesterday afternoon, and it ended the right of this district to be born. There were two people present at this event, myself and Francis Kersey. I was in her office, and filed these protests. Now, I have handed each of you, or I think I did, before the meeting. If I didn't, I'll hand them to you now. But, how, are there any of you that did not get a copy of what was filed? Or do you all have one? All right, I'll assume you all have one. First page is a transmittal letter to the city clerk. The second page is a calculation of the percentage of the written protest. Behind that is a list of property owners compiled by the city, which we used, and behind that are individual pages, each signed by a record owner of property in the assessment district. The chart, which is at the second page of this packet, lists seventeen record owners of property in the assessment district. The first, as you'll see, is Ladona, Ladona Markland Trust. The last is Chesapeake Land Company. To the right of each property owner, I have indicated whether there is a protest, a written protest or no protest. If you count the number of written protests, out of the seventeen record owners of property, nine have filed a written protest. That's a majority, fifty-two percent. Once that event occurred, as it did yesterday afternoon, the ability of the city to create this district ended. Now, when I lobbied some of you, I said, "Well, I'm hopeful that I can bring this to the attention of the council first, demonstrate that these protest instruments meet the statutory standard, and there will be no need to have this heard on the merits." For it to be heard on the merits, of course, there would be all kinds of arguments about its advisability, its propriety, and all kinds of things the statute contemplates. But, it cannot be heard on its merits. The council can go no further. The district cannot be born because of the event that happened yesterday. Now, if there are any questions about the number of protest instruments, when matched against the city's list of the owners of property within the district, you can check them yourselves, because you have them in front of you. Now, one other thing that's sort of unusual. I am hopeful that you will accept this argument and end this right now, because I don't, I don't think you have authority to go any further. But, suppose I am overruled. There is another kind of protest that's important here, and I call it a jurisdictional protest. It is a protest on the four statutory grounds that would be heard if the council decided this on the merits. The importance of this written protest is that it must be filed during the hearing. That's what the statute says, "at the hearing." If the protestant does not file the written protest during the hearing, the protestant cannot go to court. The District Court of Oklahoma County would lack jurisdiction to hear a challenge if the protestant did not file the protest during the hearing. Now, this is a separate kind of protest than the one that was filed yesterday on the record. Ms. Grace will now leave the chambers with her stack of protests, and we'll give one to Francis right here on the record, and she will go down and take the rest to the clerk's office and file them during the hearing. May I approach?
Yes.
Now, I know if we take this as a stretch, but I'll tell you. When I read the court case that said this, I, it really set me back. It was decided last year, and it's called Cox versus City of Tulsa. And I've got a whole stack of it, if anybody wants to read it. One for everybody. And what the Court of Appeals said was, some people went into the District Court of Tulsa and said, "We were protestants of an assessment district. We were overruled. We're disappointed. We're coming into the District Court. We want you to overrule the city council." And the court said, "Well, did you file your written protest during the meeting?" "No, we, we did it the day before. We emailed it. We hand-delivered it to the mayor and the members of the council and the city clerk. But, did you file it during the hearing?" "Nope." "Well, then you're out of here." That was the decision in the Cox case last year. Well, that's not going to happen to us. But, I don't think you need to go one step further. Now, you've heard the statute. I attached a copy of it to the letter brief that I submitted to each of you. You also have copies of the written protests, the majority of the owners in the assessment district. The city clerk will attest that indeed they were filed yesterday in her presence. The district is dead. Any questions? I, I'd like our legal counsel to, to respond to what the city's view is.
That is correct. If more than a majority of the record owners of property in the district protest, the statute says it shall not be created. So, if that's the case, the council lacks jurisdiction to create the district.
So, there's two, it's, you could, you could, there's two, it's amount of area, a majority of the amount of area, which doesn't, isn't in this case, or a majority of the number of owners?
That's correct, sir.
And there is any dispute as to whether, what standard ought to be used? The majority is just a simple majority of the landowners?
Yes.
If there were, if one piece of land was cut in half, and had, there were two more, two owners, that each one of those would...
Then there's two.
More than one owner of the same piece of property?
No. If they're like joint owners, they would just be one, they would be considered one owner.
They'd just be counted as one. So, you're, you're confident that we don't have jurisdiction to go forward?
Based on the petitions that I... Based on the petitions that I've seen, that's correct.
Would it make sense to continue, I know it's been continued before, but would it make sense to continue it one more time in order to give you more opportunity to give us a, I'm not saying you don't know what you're talking about, but.
May I address that?
But here's what I'd hate to see happen. I would hate to see something arise that says that's not the way it is, and then we'd be.
Well, can we hear from the applicant?
Well, may I respond to Councilman White?
Sure.
Let me tell you what'll happen, Councilman White, if this is continued. First of all, I don't think it can be legally.
I understand.
The applicant's agreed he can go to the District Court if he wants to. What he ought to do is go back to the drawing board and draw it over. That'll resolve the issue. You all know what the issues are in it. That's all they have to do, leave us out of it. But if it's continued, I guarantee you that Chesapeake will seek out these written protestants and will buy one or more of them off. I guarantee it. Now, you have to ask yourself, is that what we want this statutory scheme to be? Because then it just becomes a game of, okay, I'll see your $20,000 and raise you another five. If we come back here, I won't have all those protestants. It won't matter legally, because they already voted. What they want to do is reopen the polls. Say, "We don't like the way that vote went, so let's continue this." And I've seen this done before.
Well, if they were going to do that, they could have done it during the last continuance. Can we hear from the applicant?
Mayor, Council, I'm Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the original petitioner, which is a series of Chesapeake entities that own the majority of the land up there. At the last meeting, we were here on March 4th, Mr. Groves was not prepared at that time, and so he asked for a continuance, and we acquiesced. And today, having received his documentation yesterday at 5:30, and not having time to review it, not having time to talk to the municipal council's office, we asked that we be continued to the end of the month, to give us an opportunity to review the information he's provided you. If you vote on, if you make an agreement based on what he gave you today, based on his information being accurate, then Mr. Brumman has told you what you have to do. We're not sure his information's accurate. We haven't had a chance to look at it. Neither has the city staff. So we'd like that opportunity, and we've requested that continuance. Mr. Groves told us before the hearing that he would object to that, and then he took the floor before we had an opportunity to share that. So we would still like to take the continuance to do exactly what Mr. White has suggested and what we had requested, that we have the opportunity to review the data that he's provided.
Is this the first that you learned that this strategy would be employed, is to get a majority of the property owners? The first you learned of it was at 5:30 yesterday?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
You had no idea that this was?
No. In fact, I met with Mr. Groves late last week, Thursday, I think, and we went over the project. They had some ideas about changing the direction of the project, taking Hudson Harvey over on 71st Street to the Frontage Road, which would be a one-way south and not give us two-way traffic north-south from Wilshire to 63rd, which is the goal of this. And we talked through that, and my client had asked me at our last continuance to look at that option, and we did. It's not a good option. It has a lot of barriers in the way. There's a big floodplain issue. And so we've come back and said, "No, this is the best thing to do. The city agrees that the north-south connection is the, a two-way connection is the best way to serve this area, and that's why we proceeded the way we have." At our meeting at my office, you know, I had no idea that that part of the statute was even there, quite frankly. I'm not a lawyer. We've always done assessment districts, and I've done several before the city, based on the per foot basis and the majority of landowner basis. So this is news to me and on behalf of my client, and there are two other people here that are in support of this assessment district. Mr. Jeff James is here on behalf of the McKees. They're in favor of it. And Mrs. Blaylock is here on behalf of her property, and she's in favor of the project as well. So there are a number of people that are in favor of the project, not just Chesapeake. This is a needed improvement that will help allow this land to come to fruition.
The petition was originally filed on May 3rd, 2013, so 11 months ago. When the applicant filed, did they talk to the other 16 property owners and say, "We're considering doing a special assessment district. It's going to, everybody will share in the cost. This is the goal. This is the benefits we see. It's going to cost you some money, but here's the case for doing it." Did the applicant go to the other 16 and make that case?
We did not have any kind of a public hearing like we would in a zoning case.
I mean, did you?
We talked to some of the neighbors. We talked to some of the property owners that abutted their property where the improvements, a lot of dirt work had been done in the area to allow the property to be developable. But no, we did not try to approach them all.
If you take an action which is going to have a consequence that's going to cause one of these other 16 people to pay an assessment, it seems like in the future that it might be prudent to call them on the phone, even without, and just, and talk through these matters.
As part of the application process, we were hired by Chesapeake to prepare the construction drawings, and we've submitted them. And during that 11-month process, there was a review of the drawings, an understanding by the staff of how to do certain things. And when it was finally decided it would go forward, we would, we thought we'd vet out this process through the public hearing process, in which we did talk at that point to several of the property owners, contacted me, and we talked through several of the items.
So, I mean, Mr. Groves makes, I mean, a fairly serious allegation that if we were to continue this today, that he anticipates that the applicant would reach out to these nine people and try and induce them with a financial incentive to change their protest. Would you, how would you respond to that allegation?
I think it's pretty crass of him to make that in a public hearing. I've not been given those instructions. Certainly not my intent to do that. We will continue to talk to the property owners. In fact, I'm friends with one of the property owners, and we've been having an ongoing conversation about the fact that they, we designed and they constructed a piece of 70th Street, and they paid 100% for that. And so they're concerned about being assessed anything, because they've already paid 100% of 70th Street. So we'd like to have that opportunity to talk through that issue with them as well. So those are things that, again, came up at our meeting last Thursday. I've met with the city staff briefly on Thursday and Friday. They reissued their assessment percentage sheet on late Friday or early Monday, and that's what I provided, and I provided that to Eric as soon as I got a copy of it. So I'd like the opportunity to sit down and go through how the properties are divided and how Mr. Groves has analyzed to come up with 17 owners.
If I could, just a couple of things. Tim, you raised an interesting point that I wanted to talk about, and that is that property owners in this area already have paved their streets and paid 100% of the cost. This is an improvement that Chesapeake's requesting. Have you considered just building the road yourselves?
They have, but not controlling all the properties where the road needs to go, created the desire to go with the assessment route.
And when the assessment was filed, it was you all filed, and as I understand the process, and I, can he help me? I could be wrong, but a person that owns 50% or more of the actual land can file the request. Dan, is that correct? So there was no need, I think I'm following on Ed, there was no need to talk to the rest of the property owners, because you control more than 50% of the area of the land?
Correct.
So the request was filed by an individual party, essentially?
That's correct. There was three entities, I believe.
Okay, so I guess my opinion is, and I'm not a lawyer either, but my opinion is, the statute here is to protect exactly this situation, where one property owner owns more of the landmass and could force more than, could force a majority of the property owners into one of these without the process. So the statute is here to protect that exact situation happening.
Yeah, I think that's where we come in.
It would be, my opinion, that we move forward. I'm not in favor of.
We still haven't heard from the Blaylocks.
I have a question.
Okay.
Dan, this question's directed to you. Since Mr. Groves says that statutes prevent us from having jurisdiction here, do we have the right, or is it legal for us to defer this?
Councilman, the statute specifically says, and I'll read it to you, that the governing body at the hearing may recess the hearing from time to time. I think, particularly in light of the fact that it's already been continued once, the council has the ability to continue it to another hearing.
Why don't we hear from the Blaylocks? Linda and Ron, do you want to come up and speak? And you are property owners in this area.
Yes, we are.
Okay. We'll need you to give us your name and address.
Ron and Linda Blaylock, 14920 North Henni Road, Oklahoma City.
What would you like us to know?
We, I appeared here several years ago. We own some property out in that area, and they use the same ploy that, it's not the amount of acreage or lots that you own out there. It is the ownership of those lots. And we had, the attorneys that we were working with had made a little mistake in the thing. And I said at that time that one of these days, that law is either going to be changed or something is going to happen, because that area is ripe for development. It would be therefore the people of Oklahoma City to get more income off those properties. The schools would get more money off those properties after they were developed.
Okay.
There is no reason for not developing that property.
All right, Linda?
And as Pete said earlier, you know, this is really, really something that the city should do to your standards. It should be done. It should be done right. And if you're overseeing it, you'll make sure it's right. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
May I reply?
Well, I'll let Ed decide.
Sir?
I just want to make it clear that my suggestion that Chesapeake would approach people with financial incentives was not to suggest that Tim would do it. So I hope that Tim will not take that personally. I'm not suggesting that you would go out and do it. He's a fine man and a good engineer. Somebody from Chesapeake would do it.
I wish I had taken photographs last night. I drove through it, and really was, I guess you have it, it still doesn't do justice to, I mean, as I was driving through, I was thinking the same thing that Meg was saying. I mean, it's like a road on one side and a road on the south side, and then there's a gap in the middle, and you're trying to connect these two roads. It seems the purpose is to increase the value of the land in the middle of connecting those two segments. And I guess I'm at a loss at why Chesapeake, or the applicant, doesn't just build the road themselves as well. I understand the, I mean, I think you can still use Johnson Associates to get it to city standards and.
I'm doing this, I'm putting this aerial up as an accommodation to Councilman Shadid. I still object any hearing of the matter on the merits. And that's what you're about to do, start arguing on the merits. But if Councilman Shadid wants to make these remarks, here's an aerial.
Okay.
This is Mr. Johnson's plan. A lot of people who are protesting this are south of 70th Street. Chesapeake wants to open Hudson so they can sell their land. They bring it down to 70th, all the way down to 63rd, and for 40% of the cost on these people. Chesapeake owns 90% of the land. They want us to pay 40% of the cost. That's why the people protested. But I'm doing this on the merits, only because it's been brought up. You know, I don't want to argue it on the merits.
Okay. Just procedurally, if we accept Mr. Groves' argument that we don't have jurisdiction, then where would it go from there if the applicant wanted to regroup and come back?
Somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds it, and the council votes that the statutory requirements have been met, and a majority of the owners of property have voted against it, and so the district is dead. Cannot be created.
So then, at that point, Chesapeake could still approach the property owners, try and work out a deal, and come back with another special assessment district?
Sure. Sure. We're willing to sit down and redraw it. Makes sense.
Okay. Well, I would move to go forward. I'm not sure what would be, I would, that we don't have jurisdiction, that there's, that we shall not create, the district shall not be created.
Okay. Is that, I guess that's just a motion to deny? Is that the correct term?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion to deny and a second to deny. Is there any other comments or questions from the council?
We do have the ability to continue it, though. Do we not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to be sure.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Cast your votes. That item is denied unanimously. We're on to item 8G, and Brent's going to come up and talk to us about this item.
Yes, sir. Tiff District Number 2, which is the downtown Tiff District, has been a very active Tiff for the past five years. Currently, we have around 19 projects that are in progress, under construction, and they're in their phase where they're going to need, the funding will kick in. And right now, the Tiff District has adequate funding. We have $8 million in the bank and expect around $6.8 million from the county in June. But again, we've got 19 projects, and I have another five projects that are pending. They're just starting in the process. And so we're requesting to have a line of credit of $10 million. It'll be a variable rate type debt. That is LIBOR, based on the 30-day LIBOR rate. Currently today, if we actually had outstanding debt today, it would be around 0.8% on annual rate. It's a little under 1%. So what we're seeking here today is to utilize this to draw on this line of credit as cash funds are needed, and it'll be subject to annual renewal and appropriation. This is a similar type facility that we've used for Tiff District Number 4, which is the Dell Tiff. We've utilized that for about the last seven or eight years, and it's been very, it's been a good, it's been a nice tool for us to use to manage cash flow with our projects.
Brett, just talk to us about the repayment process, and maybe you did.
The repayment process is, we can, typically what I've done with Tiff Number 4, is we have excess cashes at the end of the fiscal year when we renew it. I'll pay down half a million dollars, a million dollars, or something like that. Here, we will, it'll be kind of on as needed. We'll look at it on an annual basis when we sit down with the bank to renew the debt. This is a much better rate than we have when we went out long-term back in 2009 or 2008. That rate was right at 6.99%, and this is a lot better rate than that now. So it helps with the Tiff District overall from a capacity standpoint.
Ed, do you want to say anything?
So it's LIBOR plus 60 basis points?
Yes, sir. And currently, LIBOR is 20 basis points, the 30-day LIBOR.
Okay.
Right. And so it's.
Making a total of 80.
Pardon?
Making a total of 80 basis points.
Yes, sir.
And so the $10 million is all spoken for? I mean, it's not a, it's not a line of credit to do, this $10 million is already spoken for with the projects that are?
Essentially, yes, sir. We, I do a very detailed monthly analysis on cash flow for the Tiff District, and we're going to need. And we're, we're going to need to be able to access the $10 million in the next 24 months.
For projects that have already been voted on by the council?
Yes, a lot of our projects are pay, we pay at the back end after they build the projects. And then that, in those times, a lot of those projects are coming to fruition at this time.
All right, it sounds like we're ready to vote. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8H, understand we do need executive session?
Most executive session.
Cast your votes. Item moves to executive session. Item 8I is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? Come on up. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the rest.
Greg Smith, address 9509 South Land Ave.
Okay, can you tell us about your claim?
Yeah, I hit a pothole on Reno right under I-44, owned by Delmar Gardens. You know, where you turn in the fairgrounds right there?
Uh huh.
And I pulled in Freddie's tire. And anyway, they're trying to deny it for me hitting the pothole where a car was coming over into my lane, so I had to move over. I hit that pothole, which I fix a pothole now. Why are they denying it?
Well, let's get some legal advice from our staff.
Good morning. Mayor, City Council, Matt Collins, Municipal Counselor's Office. Our office has received information from the Action Center as well as street maintenance, which indicates that we did not have prior notice of the pothole addition.
Okay, well, at the risk of putting words in your mouth, as I understand state law, Mr. Smith, a municipality has to have prior notice of more than 24 hours that a pothole exists to be legally responsible for the results of a car or any sort of action that takes place in that pothole.
Okay, the, how do I know no one's called there and made the complaint? Which it took about a month and a half after I made the claim to get fixed also. Because I go that way every day to work.
I'm really just referring to your claim, and I don't want to get beyond that for the actions that the council has presented with today. Have I summarized it fairly?
Yes, you have.
Okay, so is it your opinion, do we have jurisdiction to pay this claim if we chose to? If the council wanted to choose discretion to pay this claim, do we have that discretion opportunity?
Based on the information that we have, the answer would be no.
Okay, so what our legal counsel is telling the, the council is that we don't have discretion to pay the claim based on state law.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't think that's fair, but okay. A cop hit it one week before I did, is what the guys at Freddie's told me also. Of course, I guess he didn't make the claim either.
So I'd agree with you that it's not fair, but it is, it is the law, and of course, we would be held legally reliable if we didn't, legally liable if we didn't follow.
And it ain't a cheap mag either.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry it happened.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, we need a motion on 8I. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. And this item on 10A comes from Councilman White and Ryan. Do either of you want to speak to your, to your resolution or your ordinance?
I'm going to move, I'm going to move the adoption of the resolution. This is consistent with what we did last year.
Okay.
That was my feelings. It worked last year. We had a few longer meetings, but staff was relieved from coming over here every Tuesday and sitting here and waiting for us to ask questions, and I think that's important. And so it's, since we didn't cause any apparent problem by doing this last year, I would recommend we do it again.
Okay. Any other discussion from council before we vote then? I'll take that as a motion and a second from the two of you. Cast your votes. It passes eight to one. Comments from council? James, you want to get us started?
All right.
All right, Ed?
I just look for direction again from council on the gift policy, just the discrepancy between the franchise, had kind of draconian, the draconian charter language about if we accept anything of value, even a ticket from a franchise, that we would lose our council seat. But then being silent on other gifts. And so five weeks ago, I brought it up and was asking that everybody give Kenny direction, and I guess I just would repeat that, asking for help, asking for direction. I read a couple of council members indicated to, in a Red Dirt Report article, that would like to see it go forward instead of retrospective. I mean, I don't, it doesn't really matter to me whatever the consensus of the council is. I just think we should, should fix that discrepancy. Right now, the one that Kenny wrote had a $100 limit to kind of try and exclude meals and things like that. If the council thinks that's reasonable or not, I'm just looking for direction and would hope to bring that forward in the next week or two. Thanks.
Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Shadid neglected to say that one councilman did give the Red Dirt his opinion. That was, he didn't feel that there was any reason to go forward with this, and that was myself. So that's my position right there. There were two neighborhood meetings, I think, that I'd like to mention very briefly. Last Saturday, the Mustang Creek Homeowners Association had a great meeting under Jeff Seering. They presented what they had accomplished during the year, and then we took questions on where the city was going, and it was very well received. Appreciate the hospitality that the Mustang Creek neighbors showed my wife and I on Saturday's meeting. And then last night, there was an excellent meeting put together by Marty Lawson at the, dealing with the Westbury situation that you'll be hearing about more as we go down the line. Very well received. Citizens asked excellent questions, and it was just a, my congratulations to Marty and his group for chairing the meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
The, with regard to Councilman Shadid's comments about the, I'm not, about the ordinance, I saw what Kenny wrote. One of the things that I didn't like in it was the retroactive part of it. I think that's, because I, at, at one level, I agree with Councilman McAtee that I don't believe that we really have a problem. I think, but I do think, and draconian is a good, good word to use, the difference between the way one cup of coffee would be treated and another really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I'd like to see something, just a policy statement. I don't, and the $100 limit is okay. I don't think, there's no reason to make it retroactive that I can see, but I think maybe we ought to talk about it. There are two levels of things, and I, and Councilman McAtee has explained this on other issues very well, I thought. And it is that, there are two levels. One is you have to avoid, you avoid doing anything wrong. I mean, so there's no evil involved. But the other is you have to avoid the appearance of doing it. And I think there's a, this is a perception thing. I think it, there's nothing wrong with doing it. I don't think there's anybody that got around this horseshoe that's got a problem with it in terms of doing anything that's in violation of it. I just think it's an antiquated way to look at things, the way the charter looks at it with regard to franchises and the way that our policy looks at it with regard to everything else. So I'd like to see something come.
Pete, I can't agree with you more, except in our oath for office, we expressly say we're not going to do that.
I understand.
And if the citizens can't trust us to follow what we say in our oath, they'll throw us out of office.
Well, I understand. I do understand. I do think it's a perception thing, though. When the, and I'm not, it's not, it's not a fall on a sword kind of issue for me, but I do think that there is a perception that, and I think the difference basically between what the, what the charter says about franchises and what it, and the silence in other areas, I just don't see how it's, I think it creates more of a problem not to address it than it does to address it.
If I could just make a quick comment, too. I mean, I think Kenny's being tagged with writing an ordinance that I, I don't think you dreamed up. I think he was charged with the retroactive part of it and some other things. I provided Kenny some language, Ed, as well, that basically is a little bit more of an affirmative statement, almost like our oath. You know, I serve on a number of corporate and nonprofit boards, and in those conflict of interest statements, we're always required to say, you know, essentially that I certify that I haven't accepted anything that would impact my decision-making. Very simple statement. That is what we take in our oath, and maybe there's an approach to go that way. And I have provided that language to Kenny.
Okay.
And also, the only thing I would add is that I don't generate docket items on policy changes. So if anybody has, any, one of the council members is going to have to tell me to put something on and exactly what it's going to be. Otherwise, I'm not going to do it.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Three items. I'd like to point out a great article that was in the Sunday Oklahoman, written by good friend Max Nichols, about the century chest from the First Lutheran Church, the time capsule, how it was opened a year ago. And more importantly, those items will be on display at the Oklahoma History Center beginning April 22nd. So the story was very interesting, just a few of the items that were included in the time capsule. And I'm looking forward to that exhibit beginning in just a few weeks. Secondly, I had the, one of the staff here at the city shared with me an article about a process of seeding clouds in Utah, the state of Utah, and they're very optimistic as to the results of that. What they did was use cloud seeding to increase the amount of snowfall, which eventually results in additional rain once the weather warms up some, and they did that solely to address their problems with drought. I would like to see if we could reach out to the National Weather Service based in Norman to see if we could perhaps put together a joint grant to study effective ways to address drought here in Oklahoma. It's not just an Oklahoma City problem, not just an Oklahoma problem, but truly a problem throughout the country, especially in the southwest. And we can debate and discuss all this, but with access to the Weather Service just being 20 miles away, I think perhaps if we worked with them, perhaps there's some kind of study that could be performed. And I would encourage just to look to see if there is.
What if we invited them to come down and talk about the issue? If they have someone on staff who, who feels like they're an expert on that subject? I don't know that they do.
At one time, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board looked into this very issue, and they appointed a state weather modification board or commission, I'm not sure what it was called, to look in at seeding clouds. And the only reaction we had from the public was a peanut farmer from Hughes County who probably was ruined by untimely rainfall. But anyway, so I think it is, you know, what's raining for one person is a good deal, what's raining for somebody else may not be such a good deal. So I think before we do that, there are a lot of implications of this kind of action that we need to.
Yeah. I think what Councilman Green was saying, let's learn more about it. And so Jim, do you want to?
We'd like to contact National Services.
If the Storms Lab has anybody, there might be another expert that would be better, but.
Exactly. And I'm not saying.
Bring somebody in and talk about.
Cloud seeding is the sole, sole solution, and it may not work. I'm, I'm not a scientist. But I do think drought is a big problem, and the fact that we had near-record amount of rainfall last year, that drought can come back in very quickly and the effects of it. Just right now, I think it's placed a lot of additional pressure on our firefighters here locally and again throughout the state. The dry conditions, they can change in a minute, but let's at least study the issue to see if there is anything that can be done to minimize the effects of drought. So the third and final item is another area, more of an education process. It relates to economic development and what the city could and should do in regards to attempting to impact our revenue base. We, as a city, at least the impression I get sometimes is we take somewhat of a passive role, and when we put together a budget, for example, we say, well, the economists have suggested that our economy is going to grow by this percentage, so this is the number we should use to anticipate revenue growth in the future. That in and of itself, I'm not against. I think it's a conservative, well-thought-out approach, but you certainly don't see that in the business sector. If you did, you wouldn't have a sales and marketing effort, you wouldn't have any research and development, you wouldn't have companies trying to outperform their competition. I'm just asking that we have a, whether it's a, a education workshop or something to look at ways to try to enhance the city's revenue. And enhance, I mean, try to attract more retail facilities into the city. And it's a little frustrating to see surrounding municipalities experience growth rates of, say, in excess of 5%, and we may struggle to achieve 2%. If you just compare those things, that's, you may come to an unfair conclusion that, well, they're just outworking us. They have a much smaller base to deal with than what we do. We may have pockets throughout the city that are experiencing as large or possibly larger increases of sales, and we should, you know, protect and do all we can to those areas. But areas that are experiencing a loss in sales growth, in, in sales tax revenue, especially on the outer edges of the city, what can we do to make that particular area more competitive from a retail environment? If those areas are experiencing population growth, but yet the sales tax revenue in those areas is declining, it doesn't make sense. We're no longer competitive in those areas. I'm not saying citywide, but in those areas. And if we can get data reflecting sales tax revenues, say, by a zip code basis compared to the municipalities in that area, then we start seeing, are we as competitive or less or, or more competitive than, than those other municipalities? I'm just suggesting a workshop to look at that, to increase the awareness and possibly the effectiveness of the city to have some impact or control over its revenue growth. Thank you.
All right, Meg?
Ma'am, I'll try to be quick, but there was so much going on in the city last week. I have a long list of things. I had an opportunity to attend the WizKids banquet last week. There were over 1,500 people there, all of whom tutor children in our more disadvantaged school districts. It's an amazing program. They recognize Steve Zabel for 20 years of service to that organization, and Larry Bros at City Care. It was a very powerful evening. One of the young students, who's now getting ready to go into the military, spoke about what WizKids meant to him. And I don't think there was a dry eye in the house. It was a very, very wonderful program. Friday evening was also this 25th anniversary of CASA, very important organization for Oklahoma City. It's child-appointed special advocates, court-appointed special advocates representing children through the most difficult court process. And again, there was a huge crowd down at the Devon Boat House, and so many people helping children in very difficult situations. Hope everybody saw the paper. Sunday afternoon was our first Open Streets event on 23rd Street. You couldn't have gotten anything to eat at a food truck if you tried. You would have had to stand in line for an hour. It was amazing. There were probably 20,000 people walking up and down the street, riding bikes, strollers, skateboards, dogs, kids. It was absolutely terrific. I hope we do it again. It really brought the neighbors from north of 23rd Street and south of 23rd Street together in a, just a great way. Last night, the Memorial had its 10th Annual Reflections of Hope event at the Cowboy Hall of Fame, and the Reflections of Hope award was given to a Canadian citizen, actually his name is Romeo DeLair. And he was a leader with the United Nations Security Forces in Rwanda during the time of extreme genocide. And I think people know that 800,000 people were killed in Rwanda over the space of 100 days. It's an incredible story. Children, child soldiers fighting against other children. He talked a lot about that, and it's very important. And I just want to thank our Memorial and their board for continually bringing forward and recognizing people around the globe that are helping to solve some of the problems that we saw here in our own city. And lastly, I want to congratulate the mayor for being named to receive the D.A. McGee Award this year. It's really exciting. Thank you. Congratulations.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to look at how special permits are given to mental health institutions. I have a mental health institution in my ward that has not been in compliance since 2000. A couple of months ago, I held a community meeting about the operations of this mental health institution. health institution. The institution decided not to show up. And this institution has a application in front of us to, they are wanting to expand. And there are some serious concerns as relates to the safety of their patients and the safety of the nearby residents. I think when it comes to special permit, especially as relates to mental health institutions, those who are applying to expand their facility, they should have a community meeting. But in this case, this particular mental health institution refuses to have a community meeting. They refuse to address the security concerns. So I think at some point, we need to revisit how special permits are given to mental health institutions. And the Oklahoman and Channel 5 covered the last several weeks' stories about this particular mental health institution. I'm very sympathetic when it comes to mental illness. Everybody has one or two in the family, and I have my first, sure. So I'm very sensitive. But however, I am concerned about the safety of their patients, and I am also concerned about the safety of the nearby residents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks, John. Pat?
Your Honor, I'd just like to invite Councilman Greenwald to come to one of our economic development trust meetings. We wrestle with this problem all the time, and we'd be glad to hear his thoughts on how we might address this. We meet roughly every other week, and the retail market is a problem for us. We've wrestled with it time and time again, trying to find avenues. We'd be glad to hear some questions.
No, I don't have a solution or a suggestion. I was asking for education.
We can do that, too. But we're hoping that in a process of education, we'll strike something in your brain that you learned at Harvard that we can utilize.
Well, that's putting pressure on me.
All right. City manager reports.
We have Rodney Bivins here this morning from the Regional Food Bank to talk to us
Morning, Rodney. Go ahead and get started.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here this morning, Mayor, city council members, and city manager. Really appreciate your time today. And I also wanted to give you a special thanks for the, all the employees of the city, for the Heart of the City campaign, who help support the food bank. We deeply appreciate the city's employees doing that. And I give a little shout out to Ward 3, that's where the food bank is located. We'd invite all the council members, as well as the mayor's been out to the food bank a number of times, we'd invite the rest of you to visit the food bank. Meg's been there, and we'd love to have you take a tour. I'll go through this fairly briefly, because I know your time is important to you. I'd really like to frame the issue of hunger, just in the state of Oklahoma in general. We're the fifth hunger state in the country. It's not something we should be proud of as a state. Next one. One in six Oklahomans struggle with hunger. That's approximately 650,000, 675,000 Oklahomans on any given day are food insecure. That simply means they lack the resources to know where their next meal is coming from, or have enough resources for adequate nutrition despite it. It represents about 100,000 citizens in Oklahoma City metropolitan area. Regrettable part about that is one out of four of those are children. That's really the hardened soul of our citizens. Food Bank provides enough food to feed over 90,000 people each and every week throughout our service area. And with that, I'd like to take a brief moment, if you'll indulge me, to see a short video.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So the way we define hunger is that a family doesn't have the resources to know that they'll be able to provide the next meal, or that they don't have the financial resources to have adequate nutrition in that meal?
That's correct. Majority of people we serve, the average family size we serve is three, average annual income is $12,600. That's $4,000 below the poverty line. So ask yourself, if you had to exist on that, decisions you have to make every day, whether you have enough money for gas in your car to get to work, whether you have enough money to put food on your table, or you can afford to pay your rent? Those are questions the majority of people we serve have to ask on a day-to-day basis. Looks like we're getting close. Yes, thank you.
No one learns to talk about it. Inside to a screen. You might not see it. Most of the time, it just hurts. It can hurt for a long time. It's why kids have trouble thinking in school. Once you've experienced it, it never, ever really leaves you.
Even when you're grown, it's part of your memory, the pain of chronic hunger.
When you pull into this school district, and if you look at the houses all around here, this is a very middle-class area, or was a very middle-class area.
In 2007, John Jensen came to Putnam City West High School to coach football. He was eager to teach students, train athletes, and make a difference.
Quick feet, reps, reps, hold it.
But what he discovered was at first puzzling.
When they should be getting bigger, faster, and stronger, they were becoming weaker, skinnier, couldn't, their endurance levels were not lasting like they should be doing workouts. We had 19 broken bones on our football team. On a bad football year, you should have two to three broken bones in one surgery. It took two years for me to realize what was going on in the daily life of the kids.
The kids were malnourished. They were hungry.
We had a young man come to us, and he said, "Coach, I thought about robbing 7-Eleven today." And we went, "Are you kidding me?" And he said, "I'm starving. I just thought I'd go in and eat, and then I could get fed right there, and they'd take me to jail, and I'd eat in jail." And that was awful. That broke all of our hearts. One of our coaches said, "Why don't we put peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? Why don't we keep bread and peanut butter and jelly in the coach's office?" So we all started buying peanut butter and jelly and bread, and keeping it in the coach's office. And we got overrun with kids coming in.
Not only kids in the football program, other student athletes began asking for help. The community and churches responded by donating food. Those donations are now housed in a portable building that serves as a food pantry at the school.
Food that's furnished by the food bank. We've also had donations from some grocery stores.
Lisa Wright is a school counselor. She, along with other educators and student volunteers, help manage the pantry.
Just kind of make a big chain, guys.
Once a month, the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma makes a delivery. The food is available to students and their families in need.
I see more than anything, it breaks my heart when students will come in and they will get food for their younger siblings. And they'll say, "I don't really need food for me. I'll be okay, but I want to feed my younger brother, or younger sister, or whatever." And I admire that, and appreciate the care and concern that they have for their family. A lot of people are hurting. A lot of people need help. And thank goodness for the Regional Food Bank for helping all of us help them.
Well, the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma's commitment is that it won't cost the school anything to feed those children.
Rodney Bivins is the executive director of the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma.
It's unacceptable in this country, in this great state of ours, that a child should be going to school hungry.
The food pantry at Putnam City West serves as a model for other school districts. The Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma now delivers food in backpacks to more than 500 elementary, middle, and high schools as part of its Food for Kids programs. On this day, volunteers are helping prepare donations for deliveries to schools, senior sites, and community food pantries.
All walks of life come through these doors every day, and give it their time and energy to help someone else, a person who they'll never see, they'll never know their name, they'll never hear their voice. But at the same time, they're doing their part in helping someone.
Want your post up in this one?
Someone like 80-year-old Mary Ritter in Dibble, Oklahoma.
It really helps me get by, and it helps a lot of other people, too.
We have meals every day, of course, but we also have a free food pantry three days a week through the Regional Food Bank.
This is the chicken box.
Eddie Cantrell helped start the Dibble Senior Center and food pantry.
You doing all right today?
I am.
The pantry opened just before the economy turned grim.
All the people that, what you would call middle-class around here, their jobs went away. Those living on small incomes, social security only.
Do you hear my chicken is good? I sure do.
Those people who fall through the cracks, this is a bridge over the cracks. But that's why we started it, you know, to help those people.
Help feed people and create an environment of hope.
And thank you, sweetheart.
Regional Food Bank, if it weren't for them, we'd be dead in the water right now, you know? And they've done everything they can do to give us more. I never dreamed that when I got my age, there would be this much need. That's why we have to join together and look after each other.
Majority of people we serve are the working poor, seniors, and children. We founded the food bank in 1980. We actually started in September 1979, picking up food from back of Safeway grocery stores in a half-time pickup. That first year, we distributed about 280,000 pounds of food to about 35 organizations here in Oklahoma City. We do that every two days now. Our mission is simply fighting hunger and feeding hope. We really believe that we need to work at both ends of the spectrum, provide food to people who need it, but also work, try to get them out of their situations, so they don't have to come back continually for food. We're the largest private hunger-relief charity in the state of Oklahoma. We're a member of Feeding America, some 200 food banks throughout the country. Our administrative and fundraising cost is less than 4%. Last year, it was based 3.46%, to be exact. We cover 53 counties in central and western Oklahoma. We make over 1,200 deliveries a month. We go as far as Boise City, 32 miles from Colorado. We have 14 semi-trucks on the road every day, start leaving between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning. We deliver to every county we serve except for four, and they're fairly sparsely populated. Last year, our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30, we distributed 47.9 million pounds of food to over 1,100 partner agencies and schools throughout our 53 counties. Some of our programs, childhood hunger program, we actually got a call about 13 years ago from Columbus Elementary School principal, said they actually had a child stand in line for school breakfast that passed out. They discovered that child had nothing to eat but a hot dog with no bun all weekend. Ask if we could respond to that. Our response was to start a Food for Kids Backpack Program. We ended this last school year serving over 15,500 chronically hungry children in 477 elementary schools in all 53 counties. We're currently serving over 500 elementary schools, about 16,500 children. We started kids cafe sites. These are sites where really, a child has no place to go after school. May be on the streets, may not be anybody at home. 35 of these locations serving about 1,500 children. They get either a healthy snack or a meal after school. They also have tutors that come in, helping with their classwork if they're falling behind in school. We also partnered with the City of Oklahoma City Parks Department, play in the parks in the summer. Last year, we provided 180,000 meals at 56 different sites in the City of Oklahoma City. We should've known that hunger didn't end its elementary school playground. We got a call, and you saw it in the video, from Putnam City West, as well as Western Heights, that some of the kids had obviously graduated from the elementary school, and they were taking the hunger issue with them to middle schools and high schools. This last year, we ended up at 91 school pantries, more than 2,875 students. This year, we're already at 120 pantries in elementary and middle schools and high schools. Senior feeding, I won't go into a lot of detail, we're providing food to almost 10,000 seniors. We actually ever low-income senior housing projects in the City of Oklahoma City. We actually set up what we call a mobile pantry. We actually pull our truck up, set up tables, and have the seniors come out of their apartments and actually shop for what they want. And as important as the food is, what's really important, we're hearing from the managers are, is the socialization. It's the first time the seniors gather their apartments, sometimes the first time they get to know each other. We think it's really important to serve our seniors, and I often say, as our seniors gave us a new deal, they deserve a better deal. One thing we're very committed to, in the City of Oklahoma City, we recognize, and the state of Oklahoma, the obesity rate in Oklahoma, and a lot of times, people on limited income make decisions not have fresh fruits and vegetables in their diet. We made a commitment to start distributing fresh produce throughout our whole service area. Last year, we distributed 11 and 1/2 million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables. We actually have a fresh market. We opened it in Oklahoma City at four different sites. We have over 1,000 families coming in, low-income areas, getting that fresh fruits and vegetables they wouldn't have otherwise. We broke out, next slide, there you go. And you have this in your deal, and I'm going to go a lot through it, but this really shows the impact on each ward, and what we do in each ward in the City of Oklahoma City. You can look over this left-hand side, the total impact. This is only for the first eight months of this year. We distributed over 7.5 million pounds of product. By the end of the year, we think it'll be around 12 million. That represents about 11.5 million dollars, if you had to purchase this product on the wholesale market. It represents 6.3 million meals. That's over 267 partnerships we have in the Oklahoma City area, 87 backpacks, serving almost 4,500 children, 22 school pantries, serving over 2,200 children, 16 kids cafe sites in Oklahoma City, serving 1,135 children. And you can see the rest of them, they continue on. I'm not just spending time on this slide, we are now currently expanding the food bank. We're going through an expansion process. This will be our third expansion. We're adding about 44,000 square feet to the facility. At the time, when we end the expansion, probably about 12 months, we'll have about 194,000 square feet. One thing, we started looking at our whole distribution system about three years ago. I'm trying to ask ourselves the question, if we had to do this thing over called Food Bank, and would it look differently? We came up with it, we actually engaged the students from the University of Oklahoma Industrial Engineering Department, we've used for 13 years now, to look at our effectiveness and efficiencies. They divided our whole service area into eight quadrants. We came up with this concept called Food Resource Centers. One of the challenges we have is sustainability, is that many times, one of our partner agencies will only be open a half-day, from 2:00 to 4:00, the first Tuesday of each month. We just can't sustain the operation. People that are working can't get there to get food when they need it. So we came up with the concept of Food Resource Centers. We currently have five open, you can see those, Urban Mission, it's over 3,700, North Portland, Loews and Fishes, Needed Oklahoma, City Rescue, which is just as west downtown, Lawton Food Bank, and Help in Oak City. We're getting ready to open another one in Moore. We actually opened that facility in Moore during the disaster, almost 12 months ago, 11 months ago, to disaster relief. During the disaster, we were serving 250 to 300 families a day, six days a week, in Moore, Oklahoma, and South Oklahoma City, because the second wave of storms that came through affected South Oklahoma City drastically, and lost the power, and flooding, and some other issues. We actually have another 10 sites on the drawing board that we're in the planning process, meeting with the communities, working for those locations in Oklahoma City. Skyline, Urban Mission, which we just got permits for, Southeast 15th and Byers, The Rock, which will be on Northwest 10th and Council, approximately, Northeast Wellness Center, and there's one more that I'm drawing a blank on, but there'll be four in Oklahoma City. Our goal is to have 40 or 50 of these throughout our whole service area. They're based on a client-choice shopping center. Clients really have a lot more dignity when they come in, they actually have a grocery cart, they go through and shop for what they need. It's based on, almost like a small grocery store. You can see by some of the videos, we completely stock them with fresh fruits and vegetables. And again, we'd invite you all to come out and take a tour. I don't want to take any more of your time. I know your morning's been long, and I appreciate all your hard work, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thanks, Mayor, for the time.
Questions? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Rodney, I have a concern. First of all, thank you for all the work that you do with respect to the backpack program that you work with children in schools. With respect to the backpack program that you work with children in schools, I have an underlying concern that in some instances, those children don't get to have complete access to that food over the weekend. Would you, would your organization work with churches to provide, say, meals to where you knew that the children who came into that church or other facility could at least get a meal on a Saturday and a Sunday, if those other organizations would work to provide the people to prepare the meals?
Sure, sure.
Is that a concern as far as the children taking the food home with them in the backpacks, being able to utilize or having access to that food for the entire weekend?
It hasn't been a concern of ours at this point. We survey, we actually go out and survey 10% of the children that receive that food every year. We also survey all of our Food for Kids coordinators at every school, and we have not heard that, and it has not been the feedback. And what we have heard, 85% and 95% of those students that received the backpack, absenteeism is down in school, behavior is better in the classroom, and grades continue to improve. So we think it's a win-win situation.
I guess I'm just being overly concerned trying to provide food, prepared food, for individuals over the weekends in addition to the school time.
But we would consider that, sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions for Rodney?
Mr. Mayor, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the National Association Workforce Board, so some of the things that was discussed to help and to assist organizations like yours, there's a new theory that's called Pay for Success Bonds. And it's kind of a pilot project that Harvard Kennedy School is doing. But I think that's something that we may need to look into to help organizations like yours to deal with the homelessness in our city. But it's, again, it's called Pay for Success Bonds, or Social Impact Bonds. But again, Harvard Kennedy School, they're doing some research in regards to that, but that may be something that we may want to look in to in the future.
Okay. Thanks, John. Anybody else? All right. Rodney, thanks very much.
No, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
How many employees do you have? How many volunteers do you?
We have 100 employees, and during the summer, it ramps up to about 130 because of summer feeding. And we had 47,000 volunteers last year that donated over 160,000 hours to the food bank. 33% of all the food we distribute is touched by volunteer. Every backpack is packed by a volunteer. We couldn't exist without them. And most of those are citizens of Oklahoma City, I might add.
Right. And the need continues. Rodney, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens to be heard. We have a couple people that have signed up. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes. Joe Sarge Nelson?
Well, I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. Normally, everybody knows why I usually come up here, and I'm not going to change that pattern, but I am today. I do have my values like everybody else, and when I see something like this, like your program, just presented for the military, I don't intend to put a black mark against it in any shape, form, or fashion by any remarks that I may make today. I'd like to just stand right here. I can always come back on another Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Reverend Mark Christian? Good morning. Good to see you again.
City councilors, good to see you all. I'm Mark Christian. I'm a lifetime Oklahoma City resident. For the last 13 years, I've served as the lead minister at First Unitarian Church, 13th Dewey. I'm here today as part of a coalition of working and faithful persons who live in every corner and every ward of the City of Oklahoma City. This group wants the people of Oklahoma City to have an opportunity, the opportunity to live fulfilling lives and to fulfill their essential responsibilities as citizens by dictating their own fate, making their voice known on a matter that is of supreme importance in their lives. Many of us believe that the time is overdue, that Oklahoma City become a better place for working families, certainly consistent with the report we just had from the Regional Food Bank. We believe that the welfare of our fellow Oklahomacitians, the emotional, physical, spiritual health of our neighbors, and the strength of the overall economy would benefit by putting more of the money in the pockets of the tens of thousands of Oklahoma City residents who presently work at minimum wage. OKC raises the wage as seeking a vote of the people. We want the voters in Oklahoma City to have the opportunity to speak. We think their voice needs to be heard on a matter of such great importance in their lives. We hope that you will agree with us that it's time to put more money in the pockets of the people who will spend it immediately. But at the very least, as elected officials, we want to give you, the nine elected people in this room, to do your part to let the citizens speak, yea or nay on the matter. The very foundation of our civic system, voting, giving the people the chance to decide yes or no. And so I ask you, as city council persons, and as you as the mayor, if you would sign our petition to bring a vote to the public on raising the minimum wage to $10.10 an hour. We hope that you will stand with the citizens and give the people a right to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have executive session. We'll be back.